There we go.
Good morning.
Know you.
Good morning, everyone. I'll call our county board meeting to order if you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen, here. Commissioner Heinon.
Yep, here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Right, move into approval or amendments to the agenda. Monty, do you have anything?
We have no changes.
Wow, okay.
Ooh.
Is there a motion to approve it?
So.
Second.
Motion is second to approve our agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off yourself or turn them to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Anyone here for that? Beth?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, items one through 12. What are your wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion.
Second.
Motion is second to approve consent agenda items one through 12. Any further discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Move on right away to Kristen Cheetah, Emergency Management Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. We'll try and keep it short and sweet this morning. I just would like to propose a formal flood response policy that kind of outlines and adopts what I believe has been the practice for Benton County over the past, gosh, I would venture to say probably 10 years or so. So, something a little bit more formal and in writing. It also has been reviewed by the Audit Office, Public Works and the Attorney's Office.
Okay. Any questions for Kristen? Nope. No questions at all? All right, we're gonna need a formal adoption of it.
Also move that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? We got a motion of second for the adoption of that policy?
So, all the townships that are involved in this have been, they'll be notified too?
Yes, yeah. I can send out a copy of the policy once it's completed, signed, I should say.
Great. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Have a good day.
Good day.
Monty, you're up. Benton Economic Partnership intern introduction.
That's Amanda. Here she is.
All right, Amanda.
Oh, Amanda, wow.
I know, it's been a while.
Could you maybe reintroduce yourself, please, ma'am?
Who were you formerly with?
Good morning, Chair, Board of Commissioners. My name is Amanda Ogo and I'm Benton Economic Partnership. See, I just wanted to introduce our newest intern, Johanna Isaro Gango. And I wanted her to kind of provide a little bit of background on her new position with BEP. She is going to be, she started with our organization on March 13th. She will be with us until December 8th of this year. So, we have her for a little bit of a longer term during her internship here. She's gonna be responsible for taking care of our business retention and expansion program. So, she's gonna be taking that over from Mcello and implementing that throughout the year. And if you're not familiar with the Business Retention and Expansion Program, it's our economic development strategy for the county where we proactively connect with our existing businesses to understand and respond to local business needs. We also develop a comprehensive business retention and expansion program to help businesses stay and grow in our community. So, she has some big shoes to fill, but also a lot of responsibility on her shoulders. But I'm gonna turn it over to Johanna so she can introduce herself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Johanna Isaro Gango. I'm a student at Saint Cloud State University, triple majoring in political science, international relations, planning and community development. I'm an international student from Kigali, Rwanda, and I've been in Minnesota for the last five years, and I love it. I, I heard about BEP through the Saint Cloud State Community Development Program from my professor, and I thought it was a good fit for me because I have a little bit of background on other internships in my home country that I was able to serve during the pandemic. So, I got to go home for two years and complete two internships. One was with the city of Kigali. Kigali is the capital city of Rwanda, my country. And I was serving under the Affordable Housing and Informal Serumantof Grading Department of Public Planning and Body of the City. And with that, I got to learn a lot about affordable housing and informal serumantof grading that served lower income and upper low-income folks in Kigali. And what I learned from that is just being a part of an effort that supports community-led development because these are communities that have little to nothing economically, but are willing to create a resilient community out of themselves. So, I served there for a year and a half. And then, last year, I was able to work with a sister organization to the Peace Corps called Core Africa, which is an organization that deploys communities in some countries in Africa. And they place volunteers in communities that are remote and rural. And they support low, low, low-income projects, but that have a high impact on these communities. So, we're talking highly uneducated people with very low income, little to low income, but that are also willing to create a sustainable economic development for themselves with the little tools that they have. So, working both internships really encouraged me to follow a career and an education in understanding more how to work with communities and also to organize projects and understand how these communities work and how to collaborate with these communities to implement these projects. So, when I heard about BEP, I was very excited, not only because it was a completely diverse organization from what I knew, and it was my first option again through Saint Cloud State and just in the US in general. So, I was really, really nervous at first. I've only been with these people three weeks, but I have learned more than I have learned in the last four years that I've been in college. So, I'm gonna talk about a few things that I like about BEP. The first thing is the company culture. I like that there is room to grow and an open work ethic. I did not understand a lot about economic development. I had worked around it, but not necessarily been at the forefront of an organization that, that has that as a core goal. So, meeting Amanda and some of the few other people that I've met who are willing to teach me and mentor me and guide me despite some shortcomings that I may have because I don't understand some things and just to emphasize on the strengths that I have has been really rewarding. The other thing that I really like is that it's people-centered, which I've been speaking about from the beginning. Every organization that I've worked with is people-centered. So, finding that in BEP also helped me to love starting an organization that's always seeking sustainable solutions for the Benton County community, in this case. What I plan to do with my experience after, well, so I'll start with college. I want to go to grad school and do a master's in public administration with an emphasis in regional planning because I want to follow a career in socioeconomic regional planning. So, what I plan to do is work with BEP for now until I graduate, then go to grad school, and then use the knowledge that I've learned from the amazing team of professionals that I'm working with to, to go and transfer that knowledge to communities who don't have this opportunity that Benton County has. And after graduation, I, like I said, I love Minnesota, like I always do, Amanda. I want to stay in Minnesota. Women call it everything, but I want to stay here and serve the community that has given me so much through my education and through my career growth. And eventually, transfer that knowledge to my home country because I think that I have seen the impact that BEP has had on this community, and I would love to be at the forefront of an effort that does this for my community. Some of this.
Great. Well, welcome again.
Yes.
And Johanna, I hope you realize our teasing of Amanda is because we like her so much.
Mister Chair.
Yep.
You know, good job for coming on board, Johanna. I think you're gonna bring some new and fresh ideas, being we went through this housing study, you know, and how we can assist and help in affordable housing. So, looking forward for your input on that.
Commissioner Pop.
I just like her perspective on BEP in general. You know, she, what, you've been here a month?
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
She's been doing a lot.
You know, it's good to have an outside perspective on what BEP's doing, and I, I hear that you really like the structure and the, okay, that's really good to know.
Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity to sub in for Commissioner Pop on BEP. What happened to be her first week, right? And she can roll with the punches because immediately when she was her update.
Yeah.
Technology error.
Oh, yeah.
Remember that? So, you did very well.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Good day, ladies.
I think Amanda might have did that on purpose.
Great.
Amanda got more to add, or she done?
Anything else, Amanda? You're good.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good. I just wanted to stay for a few of the items here, so.
Awesome, okay. Monty, you're up. Appoint a public works director, county engineer.
All right. Well, of course, you know, we're recruiting for a county engineer since Chris Bird's departure back in October. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been having some conversations with Chris and the president just in returning, and I imagine that all is good news to you all as well. So, Beth, you give me a favor. Could you hand out that resolution to board members and we'll, we'll go through it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Beth.
Looks like our mic has been off here for a while.
Intentional?
I gotta, I gotta put tape over this little button so people stop hitting the button. So, again, so Chris is interested in returning, and it was my impression, I believe, that the board would be agreeable to that. So, I, I recommend that you take action today to appoint Chris as your county engineer, public works director. And I would direct your attention to the bottom of this resolution, which reflects subjects that Chris and I have been discussing regarding salary and, and benefits and so on. And again, if you want to just take a look at those items one through seven for a moment and think about those, just make sure you're all comfortable with what you're seeing there.
If this gets approved, Monty, when do we know when Chris Bird's starting day would be with us?
Chris indicated to me that he would need to give his employer a two-week notice. So, I presume he might give that soon. So, I would imagine sometimes within the next two to three weeks. If you're, again, inclined to approve this, of course, I'll have that conversation with Chris and determine his exact starting, his exact starting date. So, I, again, I'm just very pleased to present this recommendation to you, Mr. Chair, and open for discussion and your possible action.
Any other questions for staff? I mean, we've, this is not new information right now, so.
I guess, when you look at it, you know, the, after Chris's resignation, he went out and he started talking to other, with other counties, and I think, you know, it's a substantial pay increase from when he left. I don't think that we were gonna find anybody qualified or anything like that. I think it's just the market that's dictating that one. You know, I thank Monty for looking at that and bringing it forth that, that it's gonna take, you know, that kind. I do have a little bit of concerns about other department heads as we go forward, but I think if the market adjustment is there, then we can look at it, whether it's, you know, look at the individual. From my time on the board, I considered Chris Bird a smart young man that had a lot of knowledge about things that we probably didn't know about. And so, I sit there and I'm pretty well, pretty satisfied with this, that he would come back. We know he's gonna hit the ground running. And we probably won't have a hiccup of either, you know, training somebody or finding a new assistant engineer. There was other things that would go on beside, behind the scenes that we're probably not looking at this. And we do have a large road project, you know, that's, thanks to Mark Lloydalt's got it pretty well done for the, you know, up and then just, we gotta execute it if, once it gets bid. So, do I like to increase salaries that fast? Probably not. But do I feel it's warranted at this point? Yeah.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I, I would have to agree with Commissioner Pop. I think we found out what we've lost when he did resign for his new position. Also, the benefit of him helping myself and Commissioner Kapinski with Casaw 1 and 3, with City of Sock Rapids and the school district and everything and being that much involved. It's, to my point, it's very beneficial that he's on board now instead of having to pay that price for him to be a consultant with us.
Yeah.
And. I agree. Commissioner Kapinski.
Yes, and I wanna, I wanna make sure we recognize Mr. Lloydalt because I think he's done a good job over the last few months and stuff like that since Chris has been gone. And he's been doing it short-staffed. So, this immediately brings the staff back up, and everybody has worked together in the past. I think this is a win-win for everybody.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with you, Commissioner Kapinski. Hopefully, this takes off, takes a little pressure off of Mark Lloydalt in his position.
You know, from, from my perspective, it's, it's the knowledge we're getting back instantly with Chris. I mean, we all know that he had a lot of knowledge with Benton County, and I'm sure you two commissioners noticed that when you were doing your grant chasing, and he was right there holding your hands and knowing what to do. So, there's a lot of value to that.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to kind of expand on that. The, the, the work that he did behind the scenes with Samba Tech for the county on these grants, it just showed how well he is connected with all of the different legislators and everything like that out there. And instead of paying somebody to do that, this person comes back on hours and, and our payroll and starts doing it for us directly. And for my goal would be to, to let them loose, you know, try and get money.
Yeah, I think the other thing to remember too, and I'm sure Mr. Lloydalt would agree with this and Chris probably would too, is, you know, Chris was involved a lot with our broadband initiative. And they both were involved a lot in the county ditch stuff, which is gonna continue. And that's gonna be a lot heavier burden that he's gonna have to carry, again, going forward. My assumption will be is that we'll wean off of Houston a little bit and be more back to Chris.
Yeah.
And he's got that local knowledge, and, and nothing against Houston, they, they've done a great job for us. That would be my hope, is that we would transition out of that back to our highway engineer, Commissioner Pop.
Well, I, I was gonna kind of suggest that, you know, that's one of the ways maybe we can recoup a little bit of this.
Sure.
The other part that I always, always come back, that several years ago, another county engineer said that, "Do you guys in Benton County know what you got in this smart young man?" You know, it's kind of like.
And we run into that a lot at the EMC conference.
Yeah, that's where it happens.
Very highly of them statewide.
He's got a, a, a good perspective from MnDOT, from other agencies that help, you know, bring stuff to Benton County. So, I think, you know, all in all, yeah, I'm, you know, the 150,000 is a pretty big bite, but all in all, I think maybe we can recoup some of that.
Well, and when we've tried our best, I think, to talk about making sure we get the best people on board and I think Chris is gonna fit into that.
Mr. Chair. I wanna, I wanna bring that up because, you know, we just happen to have somebody sitting in the audience that just got hired.
Right.
A few months back, and, and I look at it this way. Benton County deserves to have good people working here. And when we have options to bring people in that, that can help the county out, we need to take advantage of that. And we need to, we need to use, utilize their resources. And whether that's going out and getting grants to bring back in and stuff like that to the county, where we might not have done that in the past is huge.
Well, no, that's hard to assign values to that all the time. You know, and it's, you know, the other thing to consider, at least in the short term, is if we were to bring someone new in, can you imagine what that would cost us the first year or two to bring that person up to speed?
I just have one more question for Monty. So, what you presented before us, if we agree to this, then Chris is in agreement. There's not gonna be a comeback that we need something.
Right.
Yes, so I, I sent Chris a copy of this resolution very recently, and he said this was fine. There was one issue that I wanna address that, that I don't think you have to decide today. And that is, is where does Chris fall in our grade step system? Well, there's actually another question. Does he, does he fall in our grade step system? This is a non-union department head position. So, the board could certainly look at this on an annual basis and make a decision as to salary. You could certainly do that. Or you could instead put it on a particular grade and certain step. I believe in talking to Chris, that's what he would prefer, would to be on a specific grade and step. I think this resolution gets you started today, gets him back on board. What I would recommend we do, though, is ask our compensation consultant to do some studies, look at the market, a little deeper than we've already done it. Look a little deeper. And I think also, too, look at the private sector. Typically, we don't look at the private sector. I think those experiences shown us is that we're competing with the private sector for the best talent.
Right.
So, we need to go a little bit broader than our typical market analysis. So, again, I would ask our market consultant, excuse me, our compensation consultant, to take a look at this and make a recommendation to the board as to a grade placement, a step placement. And of course, in ultimately, at the end of the day, it's, it's your decision where that would to occur. But I imagine you definitely want to take consideration Chris's preferences, internal considerations, all those things. I, it's complicated. It gets, it does get complicated. And at the end of the day, I think it is a judgment call. So, that'd be my recommendation. And this, that's a conversation that Chris and I had about what my intention would be. My recommendation is, is let's turn to our compensation consultant to take a look at the whole grade assignment issue as a recommendation to you all.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner Heinon.
I agree, but that's something we'll deal with and address, you know, in the future. Monty, excuse me, when we make a motion to adopt all of this, do you want Christopher Bird's name put in it in this resolution for adopting the county engineer and that?
It is, it is. It's be it further resolved that Christopher Bird shall be appointed.
Good.
Yep.
It's.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinon.
I'll make a motion.
We'll get into a discussion in a minute.
Discussion later.
Go ahead, Steve.
Make a motion to appoint Chris Bird as our Benton County Public Works Director and County Engineer.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, discussion.
If I could just tack on, per the conditions set forth in the resolution.
Yeah, so moved. Put that in there.
So noted on my end.
Okay. Commissioner Schlangen?
With the negotiations with the salaries, I, since it is the non-union employees and we get the ratings as to what the county, the counties are doing with what they usually get in those areas. And then, I think we also need to look at the public sector and then adjust according to that.
Does it mean possibly the private sector?
Yeah.
Private sector, yes. That, I, I agree in that sense.
Instead of doing step stuff.
Sure, okay. Well, we'll bring as much as we can to the table, Commissioner Schlangen, and, and let the board make the call. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Kapinski.
Just wanted to comment on the, on the procedures and step process that, that you had just mentioned. I, I, I think we, we agree that down the road it needs to happen, but I don't want to kick that can too far down the road. I think getting that done right away would be. Sure, of course. No, we won't delay on that issue.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, one more, don't I?
Is this the, this, this, the employee recognition event is the next one?
Well, we obviously are going to delete the next one, selecting two board members, cause we're no longer gonna need that. Planning for an employee appreciation event.
Apparently you do wanna hear Commissioner Kapinski and myself.
I don't wanna hear what you came up with.
Cause we didn't come up with anything.
You're relieved of duty.
Go ahead, Monty.
So I guess the next one then is the employee recognition event. I was asked to put this on your agenda to begin the planning for a summer employee recognition event. So, uh, maybe we could start with the month and then narrow it down from there.
Um, you've all heard me whine about it being in July when it's too hot, so I'd like to move into June or September, but that's my opinion.
September is a very busy month. I prefer not to do September. This was, this was known, this was known the very first day of my very first term.
Thing is, we're still waiting for you to bring some things back to us.
It's busy.
Once that happens, we'll believe that you're gone and busy.
June, we might have snow yet.
He needs some target practice.
Mr. Chair, I'll definitely have pictures for you.
That'd be great. The meat would be better, though.
Yeah, definitely.
This is a brutal morning.
How does, uh, June fifth look for everyone? I realize that Monty's gone that week.
Uh, yeah, that, but please, of course, don't delay. That's true. I will be gone that week, yeah.
We do have a board meeting the day after, or how about, uh, the twelfth? We've got a district meeting, that won't work.
Yep, you're right, ANC District Five.
What does the fifth look like? No good?
No, I'm just thinking it's pretty early.
Okay, you wanna move it down later to the, um, it would have to be twenty-sixth for me.
So, Mr. Chair, Monty, what day of the week is generally a good day to do this, in general?
What's a good day?
Any idea?
I wouldn't pick Friday. I wouldn't pick Monday, so that's what's left. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Cause I see Bob shaking his head out there. Do you agree, Bob?
Yeah, Wednesday is usually a pretty good day.
Definitely not Friday. A lot of people are off on Friday.
I don't know if I'll be done planting corn by then.
Wednesday the seventh.
You'll be here.
Seventh, Wednesday, June seventh. Commissioner Schlongen, Wednesday, June seventh.
Okay.
Is that what we should do?
Yep, that'll work.
And start at eleven, eleven-thirty? I'm trying to remember what we did. Eleven-thirty, start serving at eleven-thirty. And the commissioners can get together and we'll decide what we're gonna do.
What you're gonna serve, okay, got it. Yeah, when we, of course, we'll set the tables and this, the, the innings and things of that nature, yeah, we'll help out.
We do burgers, we'll make sure to s- save your shavings one for you. That tends to.
Veggie burger, so.
All right, thank you. So Wednesday, June seventh, thank you. Uh, looks like we have a. Oh, actually, we're okay on time here. I'm gonna turn it over to the, uh, Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Hynan.
This time we'll call to order the Human Services Board, approve or amend the agenda. Bob, do you have anything to add?
No changes.
Board?
Uh, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now they'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Consent agenda one and two, what would we like to do with that board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? If not, they'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Bob, anything to add to us?
I have nothing unless you have questions.
Mr. Chair, if I could, please. Bob, um, forgive me because I didn't have this prepared, but I know that I read it and I looked at it quickly this morning and could not find it. But I did receive an email from Department of Health, I believe. Um, a very well-written letter congratulating you and Peggy for a report that was one hundred percent complete. I'm trying to remember the name of it, so maybe you could help me out on that, but I just wanted to recognize you guys for that.
By the way, we get those annually.
Great, and what was the name of it again?
Yeah, I don't know. I, we, we get it every year, but we're, we're timely on our reports.
Yep, and a hundred percent accuracy, I know it was noted on there, so thank you. I just wanted to recognize that. Pass it on to Peggy if she's not listening. I meant to catch her this morning and I missed that, but thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All I have.
Anything else, board? Anything else, Bob? If not, we're adjourned at nine-thirty and I'll turn it over to the board chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hynan. Mr. Lloydalt, you're up. First item, consider a bridge priority list resolution.
Great, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. Um, they say Byrd's come back in the spring. And today you brought back the Birdman, B not B-I-R-D, but B-Y-R-D, so, um, we'd have him back.
He's on it.
Yeah, that's pretty good. The Birdman.
Great, um, so every year, we'll get the bridge resolution, prior station resolutions. Every year, we go through or do our bridge inspections and then in the wintertime, we reassess our ri- uh, priority ranking. Um, and that's based upon the LPI, which is Local Planning Index, down to be eligible for bridge bonding. Um, and has to have an LPI score of fifth, or sixty or lower. Um, and it's a big number of combinations for federal. It has to be structurally deficient, although they use LPI in the selection of that. Um, these bridges that you have before you on your resolution are all actually, with LPI sixty or lower, there's no other ones that have LPIs below sixty. So, um, in order us to apply for bonding money as well as to submit for federal money, we need to have this bridge prioritization resolution. Um, I will note that I did get funding letters for two bridges on this resolution, which is the CASA thirteen over Elk River Bridge. Um, and the CASA twelve bridge is kinda northeast of Rice, so zero, zero, zero five five zero eight and zero five five zero seven. Um, so, uh, we're excited about that. So actually, four out of these, um, eight bridges, or seven bridges, I should say, are actually, we have, we have funding for. Um, one of them is a township bridge, Maywood Township Bridge. Uh, this was on a previous resolution, um, because our state aid had declined the application previously. Um, we asked if we can resubmit it again, um, and touch up our application. And so, uh, but in order for us to resubmit that, we have to have it back on a resolution. The other one is, uh, City of Foley Bridge, the L-two-four-one-zero over Stony Brook. Um, uh, we're just working with the City of Foley. I think they're planning on doing the reconstruction now, probably likely in twenty-twenty-five, so I adjusted that um, year on the list. Um, so the, and the only other county bridge that's not funded at this point is the County Road Fifty, or Forty Bridge, zero five five two zero. Um, so with that, um, I open to questions.
Mark, if I could, the low LPI score on the Maywood Township Bridge, is that helpful for them this round, would you say, or?
Yeah, I wanna say it actually hasn't really changed since then, cause we haven't, since the bridge was closed, um, we haven't changed, we haven't done an actual inspection. Since then, um, we just go there and make sure the, the road is actually closed, the bridge is actually closed, so. But yeah, it's, it's good. Uh, I think they're looking at other things, the potential, you know, detour routes and ways around and traffic volume is what I think they sometimes look at.
Right, yeah, Commissioner Pop.
So, when they did the one down in, in Latheb Township in Sucker Creek, didn't we use some township bridge funding for that? Anything we could do with this township for that?
They have, well, we have, they have twenty thousand set aside for it.
Yeah, but that ain't.
Well, that was their requirement, was ten thousand towards construction and ten thousand towards engineering.
Yeah, where did the Watheb, where did they get their money from for that one?
Yeah, so how it works, uh, so we have what's called a township bridge allotment. Um, within the township bridge allotment, um, for projects that have been approved through state aid, we, the county, county board can set what is the priority of which ones to, to do. So say we had, say, ten township bridges that need to be replaced, we could prioritize based upon those. So with Watheb, um, state aid did accept that application. Where, in the case of Maywood, they did not.
I see.
But right now, there is a new district state aid engineer and there's a new, uh, bridge state aid program um, administrator, uh, within state aid that deals specifically with the bridge bonding and this type of money, so.
And Commissioner Pop, just for a little history there, Chris Byrd and I actually went out to Maywood about a year, a year ago or so when they were denied their bridge replacement through state aid. And then he helped them, correct me if I'm wrong, a different application that would actually remove that bridge and put cul-de-sacs on each end. And the state, of course, wants to do that because they can get that bridge off their inventory. Well, Maywood wasn't interested in doing that and asked that it be reapplied for again, knowing that there's different people down there this time to see if it would go through. Commissioner Kapinski.
Mr. Chair, um, on the bridges oh-eight and oh-seven that you said you just got funny for, there is actually, there's no local match on that, huh?
Well, I got the funding letters. It depends if, I never got this clarification said in the funding letter, if Bro's money, which is the off-system bridge money, so being off-system there, meaning it's not a major collector, it's below a major collector. Normal federal money has to be a major collector and above. Um, so for that, that'd be an eighty-twenty split. But they said, or if it's using the IIJA, I forget, there's a specific fund with the IIJA money. There would not be a local match requirement, so obviously our preference would be, um, and I never got clarification if that's something, you know, they'll let us know or we can say, yes, we want, we do not want the local match, you know, if we can get away from that.
Mark, you know when you would expect to hear back on this, on the state application, like especially for Maywood or any of these?
Um, I have to submit it yet. Um, I don't know how long that would take. I'm not sure if that'd be a few weeks.
You have a tentative construction year of twenty-four for that particular one.
Correct, yes. It wouldn't be this year. There's, I don't think there'd be, even if they did, uh, get approval, the, the supply chain problem with box culverts right now, pre-cast box cul- box culverts, um, I don't think we'll see it, like twenty-three right here. They were, obviously they wanted to replace that box culvert and they could not get that last year.
Gonna shut her down again to do it, right?
Yeah, so they're doing that again this spring. Uh, so I would say that'd be the soonest, plus our downtownship bridge allotment, I think we have about three hundred and, I wanna say forty thousand in there, and you can see this is, this is a, what, a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar project.
Um, and I, you know, I know they're not the exact same thing, but when we did the one out in County Fifty, wasn't that about three, about a hundred grand less?
Yes, and they have gone up, yeah, yeah.
All right.
So one more question. So the two on thirteen and twelve, are they in both total replacements?
Correct, yes, they'll be total replacements. Right now, yeah, and we're also working on the other two that the zero fi- zero five five zero five and, and then we'll just say it ends in, uh, eighteen. Those were currently, I already have preliminary plans on one of them to replace in twenty-twenty-five. So, them are, we're using the Bro's money, the, the off-system bridge money, so on those two.
All right, I'm gonna move adoption of the bridge priority list resolutions presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion on this bridge?
Good job.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? Hearing not all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried.
All right. Um, wanna let you know that coming this, uh, Friday, we're actually opening bids on all our, our paving project, reclaim projects. Um, they had, coming up this summer, so, uh, this Friday at ten AM, if you'd like to stop by the Highway Department, we'll be opening bids. Um, I checked the plan holder list this morning, I think we had twenty or over twenty plan holders. Um, some of those are just planned review companies that send it out, but, uh, um, I, all the, pretty much, I think paving com- companies that's ever bid on our work have all pulled plans on, so we'll see if we receive bids on them, but, um, yeah. So that's good. Um, we also have out-for bid our gravel crushing and our pavement markings. Uh, so we're planning on doing another thirty thousand yards of gravel crushing this year and doing on one other hundred, hundred lane miles, depending on how the bids come in on the pavement marking, so. So we have those. Um, I have, uh, next thing I wanted to bring before you is, uh, it's, it's not a formal, uh, agenda item, but is, I did, I was requested, I think a little while back, we had discussed about these landowner leases for CASA Future Twenty-Nine Corridor. So I just wanted to kinda bring that before you. I, we have those drafted, work with Michelle Meyer on those. Um, so each individual, so a lot of some of the properties have sold since, some, you know, were part of eminent domain. And so we have a letter here to each landowner, um, explaining that, that we'll be, you know, for them to continue to end, you know, to farm the land, um, they would need to enter into a lease agreement. So I guess with that, I guess if you have any comments with that.
What's the dollar amount?
We don't have a dollar amount on this. This is just the initial letter to let them know, um, if we do lose the snow here, that. Um, yeah, anyways, we can enter into, and that's another, uh, topic I wanted to discuss, cause as soon as we send these out, they're gonna be asking at what dollar amounts. Um, so I did reach out to, um, Soil and Water. Uh, they directed me to the U of M, extension has, uh, average rental, uh, rates for Benton County and all different counties. Uh, the average, some of it I think might be pasture land. See, average pasture land is about twenty-five dollars an acre and the average farmland right now is between a hundred to a hundred and fourteen dollars an acre.
Did they put you onto Tyler Rice down here and, in his office? By chance, he's, he is office here, through Minnesota Extension.
I guess I didn't talk to Tyler.
He may be a good resource for you, just cause he's here.
Yeah.
You know?
And they do a rental, like a rental day, where they, you know, they bring, they bring people in to see what the rent is gonna be in the tri-counties. I, I don't know, you know, before we put a dollar amount in here, we better look back. I mean, we can't rent it to anybody else. I mean, that's a.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not advocating a large dollar.
No, but I mean, I'm, I'm just amounting to satisfy, to satisfy our needs and to make sure they're aware of it. I don't, you know, I mean.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Mark a question? Mark, do you have any impression of like the typical average acreage that we're talking about here that we'd be seeking leases on? Again, it's a strip of, of course, for the roadway away. Any, any, just a general impression of?
You know, it depends on the landowner, you know, some of them, it doesn't look like they're using it, um, you know, cause it's tree, but I'm not sure if it's pastured right now. Um, each landowner, it's different. Um, somewhere we're talking, you know, like three acres. I think there's one strip that I wanna, I, I know this is total twenty-one acres of the whole corridor.
Oh, okay.
Um, but that's broken out between, I don't know how many landowners' pa- sheets of paper I've got on here.
That's still, that's way less than I thought it was.
I didn't wanna minimize it, but I also just thought, you know, it's not huge amount of acreage here.
Yeah, eight, eight different landowners, so.
Mr. Chair, uh, the, I know that, I, I think a couple meetings ago, I brought up the, the avail- ability to lease it for like a buck or something. And we were told that we have to u- go with, uh, market rate, so, which, in my opinion, is is another, I, I, I don't, in my opinion, we can't lease it to anybody else and we haven't sent these letters out in a while. I wish we could lease it for a buck, but it doesn't sound like we're able to.
Market rate can be determined between the leasy and the lesor.
Say we can negotiate.
Yeah, the, the market rate is not what the University of Minnesota establishes.
Correct, Mr. Chair, yep, and I think it's important we get these letters sent out. We're getting a lot of momentum, you know, with, with the road.
Some people are gonna come back and say, well, I've been farming it for nothing. I mean, and we, but we just need to get the process, so we're.
We, we need to get the process going.
I'm a little leery, but I agree that we gotta get the process going. I'm a little leery that we're not prepared to tell them what that number's gonna be, and so I'm, I think that by sending these out, which I believe we should do, we should be prepared for the question's going to be. Because if they call you and say, well, what's it gonna be, and we're gonna say, well, we don't know.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, that, and that's a great, great point, because at that point in time, maybe they'll give us an idea. You know, if we ask them. Well, I mean, let's be upfront and honest, right? I mean, seriously.
Correct, uh, Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the letter does say we would expect to receive fair market rate. Or reasonable or fair market rate, something along those lines.
Yeah, it says, uh, person is, uh, is required to pay reasonable rent.
Says reasonable, okay.
Mr. Chair, Michelle, are you still, are stu- are you on line?
I am, and actually, there's another issue I want to address.
Sorry, I.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Currently, we've got our standard insurance amounts, but that might be pass prohibitive, um, for these individual farmers. So I am wondering what you guys would be willing to accept, um, for insurance rates so that we can add that into the lease. Just that they have insured.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Michelle, what, i- is that the two million, two million?
The one point five five.
One five five.
And in these types of situations, we do oftentimes get less for insurance amounts. Like we did with Eisenshank property.
So Michelle, are you talking about you would like to see a request a copy of their farm insurance policy to go with the lease, or what are you looking for?
Yep, just something that's.
Shows their liability insurance.
I, I guess I would be up for that, eh, but, I mean, for no cost, they can. I, I, I guess I would be up for that, eh, but I mean, for no cost, they can put additionally insured Benton County.
Okay, well, I just, I feel strongly that the letter should go out. I also feel strongly that we should have it figured out before we send the letter out. So, may I suggest, we get this on our next board meeting.
Yeah.
To finalize.
Finalize it and finalize the dollar amount when we send this out, because I think we're gonna, I agree, they're gonna probably tell us, but. I don't know, that's my opinion.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Michelle, does state law dictate what we have to charge?
It does say reasonable rate.
Yeah.
Just a reasonable rate, okay, so.
So it's, it's considered a market.
So it could be on the bottom end of the market? And who's determining the market? Who, can we determine the market?
Have in the past, when we discussed this issue, we did go to our, our loyal. Local, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District, because they had some rates, and then I think they went to Extension as well. And then Brian Huster at that point had some ideas on rates as well.
Mister Chair, that's okay, you go, you go to them, but they have no idea that this is a strip of land running through the middle of your field that nobody else is gonna rent.
Right.
And from the insurance standpoint, I had a, a landlord a few years ago that came and said that I want, he needed a rider on my insurance deal. That's okay, and I carry two point five million, except if somebody gets hurt on that. Piece of property, walking across it or whatever they do, they can come back to my insurance and take two point five million if they got hurt, right? And I said absolutely not find another renter, and he couldn't find another renter that would do that. Because it puts your insurance at a big risk for somebody else crossing that property. There may be a landowner that is hiring somebody to do some tillage. He could get caught in the tillage machine, he could get caught. And that's when you come into trouble. There's a lot of things you gotta look at before you require the, the landowner to put insurance on there. That's gonna cover anything that, you know, and I know we gotta protect the county to some degree and I, you know, we, going down the road here. That's gonna be sticky, I think, going forward.
Commissioner Kabinski.
Uh, I, I agree with you on that, however, if they don't have insurance and they get caught in their shopper, then the county's on the hook for them.
Yeah, I agree.
So. I.
I, to me, I think it would be a reasonable request to ask them for their insurance coverage and leave it, and leave it at that.
Yeah.
I don't know how deep we gotta get into it, but, and we still have to answer the market value of this, you know, are we gonna just set it? Or are we gonna ask, I'm okay setting it, but.
Setting it.
Are we gonna ask other, are we gonna ask Extension SWCD and everybody else to put their two cents in? I just think we better set it before we send the letter out.
Yep, I agree with you.
I think this is gonna take care of itself. I think a lot of people are just gonna forego that and be done with it. It's not worth the headache, I don't think.
Forego what?
For the, the, the acreage that they're using, if it's a half an acre or an acre, they're gonna be like, it's not worth the headache, but just let it go. And then just not do anything with it.
Oh, just not lease it, you mean?
Yep.
Oh.
That's what I think is gonna happen.
That won't happen, because they're going, here's the twenty acre field and you're going diagonally across that field. That's not gonna happen.
Right, I agree with you, Mister Pop.
Yeah, I, I mean. Until the road goes in, they're gonna farm that field the way they've been farming it. They're not gonna change that part of it.
Yeah. Do we have any idea how many of the twenty-one acres are actually being cropped?
Um.
If you had to guess?
Should've brought this, I had a spreadsheet with everything on, but I did not put that uh in here, so.
You know what, that's a perfect.
I believe twenty-one acres was being, I think that was being farmed, I wanna say.
Okay, how about if we, how about if we do this, Board, can we bring the thing back to our next meeting? Can we have the answer to that question about how many acres are being farmed? And let's consider what we're gonna set for a market rate here and get that set before that letter goes out.
Yep. Okay.
That's my opinion.
So then we'll just need information about what's at the low end of the market rate value?
Yep.
Or, yep, or we can determine ourselves to what.
Or you could ask me what I would pay for.
Commissioner Pop, I don't know if we'll go that direct.
Are we okay with that?
I'm fine with that, Mister Chair. Yeah.
Okay, Mark, if you could do a little bit of that background noise with us and maybe with Michelle and, and bring something back on our next agenda to. Tie it up with the dollar amount and get the letters out at work. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Anything else, Mark?
Yeah, a few things, um, um, road restrictions are still on. And then, um.
Yes, please.
Alright, sounds good. I didn't know. So here is, let me see if I can, I should actually brought an electronic copy of the.
That would've been nice. So I asked Mister Lloydell to bring a, bring copies. Mark, go ahead, keep going, I'm having a moment here.
Oh, sure.
Being all of my roads are in the city. I wanted to know the weight restrictions and everything on all, all the roads out in the county, what they are today and what they were five years ago, just to.
Alright, so.
Gathering information.
Monte on to, sorry, I've never used this.
Mark, you wanna use the, the overhead projector?
Yeah, sure. Well, one of the maps, I don't have an electronic.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll, well, I'm sorry, I gotta hit the wrong button. We'll do this in right here and see if it pops up for you. I'm gonna have to just hit it a couple times while it thinks, we'll get it, we'll get there. We'll get there. Sometimes we just have to shut it off, turn it back on. Hang on just a second, okay, here we go.
Hey, Mark, as long as we're on a little break here, getting that done, I got a call from. An individual on the road restrictions and why there's um, big uh front end loaders going down the roads. Obviously, it was right after a snowstorm, so. A seven ton road and they got uh, they got uh, front end loaders going down them.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, I can't stop them.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm just, he's got a point, the road restrictions are on.
Yeah.
And I'm sitting here going, well, what do we do? We, we usually don't get a foot of snow in April.
Yeah.
You know, and what's gonna happen in the next two days too, what they're.
Yeah, it's gonna happen again, so I just, I think we should be prepared for that, because it's, it's probably just not happening in our area.
Right, I mean, there's no restrictions when you're doing a front end loader.
Is that like farmers?
Well, good typical, I can hook a, an end dump behind my wheel carriage for my tractor.
Yeah.
And I can load that sucker to the hilt and they can't do anything about it.
That's right, yeah.
Well, and school buses are exempt and they're overweight, empty and.
This is a commercial business, it's.
Yeah, but you still, if he's using a payload or equipment, other than motorized trucks and that, there's no restrictions for him.
Cause it's a non licensed vehicle?
Yep.
I still know if a light, non licensed vehicle can be on the road, so.
Sure.
So non licensed can be on the road?
Well, he's saying, he's not so sure that a non license can be on the road, but it happens in ag all the time, it's not licensed.
Yeah.
So.
Your tractor's licensed? Do you go on the roads?
Never.
Okay.
He's on sand.
Sheriff Heck, are you on?
Alright.
Just kidding.
Mister Chair, can I keep?
Alright, so load restrictions, so this is a map from five years ago. I figure I just start off with a map from five years ago. Um, so the, the gold or orange colored roads are the five tons roads. Uh, the blue are the seven ton roads, the green are the nine ton roads, and then the red are the ten ton roads. So any questions on that? I'll flip it over and you can look at the, the new map. And that's this year. Um, again, same coloring, um, let's see if I can get the legend. Cross, kinda cutting out nine, but, um.
What is considered Fourteenth Avenue? You know where that's at?
That's.
It's gotta be in Sock Rapids.
No, for, oh, oh, the south one is, um, you know, going down East Saint Germain and Fourteenth Avenue goes up the hill. And goes.
Oh, past that, the old carpet, Dieter, uh, isn't that Fourteenth?
I think that's Fourteenth.
Just east of McDonald's, the old carpet place.
Seventy-four.
Dieterman's or Dieters or, I'm pretty sure that's Fourteenth Avenue.
Goes up the hill to County Road one.
Yeah.
So, the question I have, Mark, is that has a map changed from eighteen to twenty-three very much?
It has changed.
Okay, the next question is, is we have still seven ton roads? What does it take to get to nine ton roads on a seven ton road?
It depends on the road, um, either potentially just an overlay, um, as much as an overlay. Or it could be um, full depth reclamation. Um, again, the more, to bring it up, standards usually have to go vertically. Which means our shoulder width becomes more narrow, and if there's not a shoulder to start with. Uh, the reality is you can't go up any higher on some roads. So like, for instance, Casah Two. Um, we had wanted to bring that ten ton road with an overlay, but we weren't be able to bring it to a ten ton road. Um, uh, to, to meet minimum state aid standards without having to reconstruct it, so, um. So a number of these roads we did change. Some of these ones that we have done overlays on the pass, so what we call maintenance overlays. Uh, those are not engineered, they're just, hey, the road's falling apart, we can't get to it in five year plan, let's overlay it. Let's put an inch and a half overlay over the top of it. Um, so what we did on a number of those this last year, we hired Braun to go out and do. Um, what's called, uh, well, spring load restriction analysis, and what they do is it's, they use a, it's called a falling weight deflectometer. It's a weight that drops and it measures the deflection. Um, part of that, what you also to know if it meets spring load restrictions is know how much pavement and gravel you have below it. From there, you can figure out, doesn't meet a certain ton uh spring load restriction. And then uh, also what is the, essentially the resistance of the subgrade, how s- good of a subgrade is there? Cause it's different parts of the county, we have good subgrade and sand country, but when you're not in sand, you're in clay, the, our, the, that value's not as good. Um, so we've done that. Actually, a number of our five ton roads were increased to either seven or nine ton roads as a result. Um, but I, we're kinda beyond that, that what we have to do is essentially, we have to do construction projects on them to bring them to a higher. Design, or we could go out there and core all the roads and try to figure out what's there. Um, and bore the roads, figure out what the R value is to determine whether or not that actually would meet. Um, uh, what, you know, if it would meet a different uh higher, you know, ton road.
So let's back up a minute, so you, what engineering or what firm did you use to do that study?
Braun InterTech.
Okay, thank you. So when they did that, and we'll use five ton example, because I believe that's what you used. Is when they go and do that, and it was a five ton road, and what they're showing is that it could be a seven ton road by just everything that they've been doing?
Yeah, cause I mean, over the years, um, we've added pavement, maybe with, without taking the. To see what the R value is essentially, to know what ton road it actually would meet, if that makes sense. So yeah, they're able to determine if it actually meets a seven ton versus a five ton. They'll tell us actually what it. Uh, meets by projecting the traffic on the road.
And then at that point in time, that's when you go ahead and change the, change the tonnage on the road then, on the road signs?
Yeah, we did on some of these, yes.
Okay, cause that was the question that was brought up to me is, what offers the change? You know, and I says, well, I don't know, an inch and a half of the Tuminus offers a change for loadage, right?
Correct.
You know, but, so I just wanted to understand the process of how we could go from a five ton to a seven ton. With this, with Braun InterTech doing all this stuff.
Yeah, and then some roads, um, we've made changes. The road, um, was re- say reclaimed a number of years ago. It actually met a ten ton road, but it didn't have an outlet, meaning, you know, it was, it was uh, sandwiched in. For instance, County Road, um, let me think here, where's, where's my mouse? Oh, I got it on the.
Yeah.
But County Road fifty-eight, I just know like this segment, when we reclaimed it and paved it, Town Hall Road, it met a ten ton road. But we're surrounded by a nine ton road and a nine ton road, well, we can't bring that to a ten ton road. So some cases, some roads are, there, there's no outlet right now, um, and so they get changed later when there is an outlet.
Kind of a stupid question, excuse me.
The, this is information I never knew, so thanks for explaining this, you know, but to me, I still can't understand how they can go ahead. And, and do this process, Braun InterTech, and, and still bring it up, you know, from a five to a seven ton. You know, that I'm still not understanding, but go ahead, Mister Chair, sorry.
Mark, so is it a safe assumption, all county gravel roads are at five?
My s- I, my understanding is from state statute, uh, it, it actually distinguishes that, says gravel roads. They don't even technically have to be posted, they are considered five ton, but if a road, a paved road is not posted, then it's considered to be ten ton.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Commissioner Kabinski.
Wow.
Mister Chair, uh, question, when they start read, um, directing traffic off of ten, are we gonna run into any issues with. Our roads that they're directing, like County Road one and?
Um, those are ten ton roads, um, currently, um, and I think part, as part of, of the detour agreement. They need to be maintained as ten ton roads during uh the detour.
And if, if I remember correctly, is Mindat giving us some money for that?
Yeah.
Six grand.
That's all it was?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, a little bit more, sixty-four or something like that.
Not a lot.
No, it's not a lot.
I, I think we're gonna run into some problems whether we like it or not, because once they start looking at the map and they're, all the traffic is going. Towards ten this way, you're gonna get people cutting by the school and then taking the molar road or the next road over. Twenty-nine to, to get away from traffic, or even going all the way to twenty-five. You know, I, I think, I think we're gonna have to make sure that that is marked pretty heavily, that this is, you know, there's.
And that's what I brought up at, I'm sorry, Mister Chair, that's what I brought up in one meeting too about this, is that there better be, you know. A lot of signage, knowing that they shouldn't be going straight.
Yeah.
They should be going around that roundabout, getting back to Highway ten.
Yep.
Well, it'll, it'll keep them slowed down too if they do that.
Correct. So, Mister Chair, so Mark, how, how often do you have Braun InterTech go around and do this on the roads?
This was the first year.
First year, okay, so that's, that's what brought.
Many of those were, yeah, were done, because they were previously overlaid road and they were five ton. Um, five ton's a pretty low uh rating, and so it's a look at those is, is there opportunity to bring it up, because we did do an overlay on it, so.
So my next follow-up question is then, are you comfortable with that of moving, you know, when Braun InterTech goes ahead and does all of their. Whatever you wanna call it, sorry, uh, bring it up from a five to a seven, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Actually, if you look around surrounding counties, like Morrison County, I think all the roads are nine ton. Um, they have a few ten ton roads and the ones that I don't think are uh, nine ton are ones bordering uh surrounding counties. Sunset County is pretty similar. I don't, you don't see a lot of five ton pavement roads out there anymore.
Commissioner Pop, do you remember back when I was first on the board that our goal was to get our roads all up to nine ton? Remember that conversation we had?
Any of the ones we resurfaced in?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that's still our goal, right, Mark?
Yes, and typically when I do a reclaim project, we usually, our goal on a reclaim, and especially, especially on a reconstruction. Is to bring that road up to a ten ton road.
Like seven will be a ten.
But if we're planning in the five year plan to bring it up, or to do an overlay on it, um, and uh. You know, we're gonna have to add four inches of mix to bring it to a, a nine ton road, it come from a five ton, that's probably not gonna happen. But if we can bring it to a, a nine ton, that'd be great, you know?
Okay.
So County Seven with reconstruct next year will be a ten ton.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Well, this is great information. Thank you for bringing this forward to me.
Any other questions, any other questions for Mark or any other updates, Mark?
Mark, one more question, um, how long can road, road restrictions can be on for six weeks?
Yeah, there's, the state statute has a maximum amount of days, and I don't recall that off the top of my head.
Okay.
So, um, let's see if we can go back to computer again, oops.
Takes a few seconds.
There we go, um. Just a quick update, I did submit, we did all our training for MS four, we had that notice of violation MPCA, I submitted it. Obviously haven't hearing back yet that we're good, but um, I'm assuming we're good. Um, and then, I don't know, if, if you have time, I'd just, um, like to give just an I, uh, update on construction. What we're all doing out there, like what is staff doing, the engineering side, if that's okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, um, so I got a little bit of a flow, or not a flow chart, but just a number of different things that we're, we work on. Um, a lot of this is dictated by state aid and federal requirements, um, so, but. I, I proceed the same with most of them, except for certain like provisions that are required if they're federal. Um, cause documentation is, is key, um, we wanna, we wanna be out there and document, document, document. Um, so first thing we do is, um, all the inspectors, when our inspectors are out there, they're writing what's called the daily diary. Um, they're keeping track of a lot of different things. There's two different diaries, there's a daily diary, and then there's a weekly diary. So I'll just kinda give you a little, uh, what that looks like. So we keep track of the day, the hours worked, what time they start, what time they end, how many hours. So we keep track of the day, the hours worked, what time they start, what time they end, how many hours. Working days charged, if it's a working day contract, we usually have a completion date, but some days we give them so many working days to get the work done. And so that's what that's talking about. Multiple times weather changes throughout the day, so multiple, what the weather was at at certain times throughout the day. Who is there? The work in progress, so that's just a summary of what they're doing, they are reclaiming. From this station, which is our kind of our project reference point, to this point, um, you know, and just kind of gives a summary. What contractors are out there working, what are their labor forces? We have, you know, say one foreman and, and four, uh, operators. And then all the equipment that's being used, so we document that every day, um, that's with, uh, that's happening on the projects. Um. Then this is just an example of a weekly diary, it just has a bunch of this different various information. Kind of gives a summary of the whole week, uh, all that stuff that comes off the daily gets on this weekly. Uh, so we compile that, and then the working days charged, you can see there's four point five hours charged this week. Uh, there's forty-five on the contract, and now there's forty and a half remainings. That's typically something we share with the contractor on a working day contract, so that they know, uh, how many working days they do have left. Um, so, um, back to. Also, uh, our inspectors are obviously inspecting the work, they're making sure it's built per plan. Per, uh, specification, per the special provisions, um, quantities. Um, so all these quantities that we have, there's a certain unit item, um, that it's, it's used off of, so a ton. Uh, so every item that we have on the project that we bid as a ton, they provide us weigh scale tickets. Um, so, and then they have scale checks. So one thing to think about, one load of, uh, mix is fifteen, it's pretty much fifteen hundred bucks every load, you know, you can estimate. So it's quite a bit, you know, each load, that's why we grab the tickets, is to make sure they come to our project, they didn't go to somebody's driveway on the southern part of the county. Um, so, and then for non-measurements, so if it's cubic yardage, my, uh, inspectors are measuring the length. The width and the depth for every quantity, and this way, all those quantities can be verified. And so when they have those all entered and computed, they bring them back, they enter in our system. Before we make pay estimate, uh, final, or a payment to the contractor, I go through and verify all those. So we have measurements on everything that we do, um.
Mark, if I could just interrupt you quickly, so I don't forget to ask you, on all these forms, especially the diaries and stuff, are these all electronic fill-in forms, or they write handwriting this stuff?
Right now, there have been handwriting them.
That's that.
Yeah, right now it's been handwriting, so, um.
When are we gonna switch that electronic?
Yeah, is there any plans on, do they not have laptops or?
Yeah, they do have tablets, now they do have laptops, so.
Okay.
I kind of leave it up to, first I had them, I handwrite them just to get used to the format, the system that we enter them into. Uh, doesn't necessarily have that format, I think there's a lot of key things that you can't forget if you don't have the correct format. Uh, are, we have a software program called One Office, um, and that, um, is very, just kind of vague, you can just put a bunch of different things in. Um, but, uh, be able to, uh, can be able to, I think with these, you can create PDFs and still be able to write them in that way. And that would probably be easier to copy and paste too.
Yeah.
I've noticed when I've been out in the field myself, uh, previous working here in the county. Uh, sometimes it's nice having that paper thing to jot in, so you don't have to log right into your computer to add a note that you may forget about later.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's the quantity side, um, so like in our field books, yeah, we sometimes keep track of this electronically. Um, or, uh, we keep track in paper form, it's sometimes just easier in the field to have the paper. But we do, uh, we do enter these in electronically too, but you can notice like, here's geotextile fabric. You know, it says the location, the date, the amount, the running total, and then we have the, all the measurements. So we document all that stuff. Um. Let's go here. So we have a, this is a state aid documentation manual, it's a fifty-one page manual, it tells you about all the documentation required. Um, so you can go to, we'll just say. Aggregate base, I guess, surfacing class, whatever. Here's what it's saying, that me- me- the method of measurement and tons, so we need those scale checks. And what we have to do as a result of, for our documentation, documentation is those tickets, so. Um, so it's kind of handy, so at least our inspectors know what they have to have. Um, and what we, when we finalize the project, if we, so to make sure we do have it. The other component of it is every bid item, um, requires materials acceptance. So if it's material, it has to be accepted, it's sometimes the case in geotextile fabric, it's accepted based upon the certification and, you know, obviously making sure. That certain matches what's being brought out of the field. Um, the specifications say what strength and different ways you pull and tests you do. It needs to meet, and if it meets those, uh, we can accept them the project, some are based upon shop drawings. Um, usually we don't get to a lot into shop drawings until we're like in the city limits, where we're dealing with like, um, you know, manholes and. Um, water mains and that sort of thing, and usually that's not on our end, um, but like the storm sewer would be on our side. Um, there's what's called a MINDOT approved products list, some materials like, um, silt fence. Um, they put around to keep sediment from relieving the site, we usually don't get certifications on those. Um, if it's, if it's a product approved by MINDOT on their approved products list, we can accept it based upon that. Um, and the last thing that's takes a lot of time, that's not really looked at, is the testing side. Um, a lot of the materials are tested, so for instance, gravel, we run gradations on those, uh. And one thing is when we do with paving, there's a lot of testing involved. I'll just show you on one project from the past, this is just one mix type. It shows every day, all the testing the contractor does, and then the agency does. So it lists all these different tests that they go for, they g- they go through. To make sure we have quality material being brought to our road. Um, so all these tabs in the bottom are various tests, this is just the summary of the various tests that all get run on that, so. Um. Gets to be a lot when construction gets going, cause you're not just filling out diaries, you're not just inspecting and making sure everything's being built right. You're also making sure we get the testing, the testing gets done, um, and it's, it's a quality product in the end. Um, so that kind of goes through that, and then there's various other things we have to check, like payrolls for state aid and federal jobs. Um, monthly pay requests, uh, you can think of it as pay vouchers. Um, then we have to give a summary of all our materials acceptance, how, why we accepted it. And how we, what was it, what's our, was our basis for accepting it? Uh, our testing summaries, we have to give a summary of all our testing that was done on the projects. Uh, we have to get the IC one thirty fours, which is just the tax withholding certification of the state of Minnesota. Um, and then there's what's called a materials exception summary, maybe there was a material we missed a test on, or, um. It didn't meet the requirements, and we have to give an explanation why we allowed that, so. So that's all the kind of, it's, it's kind of a brief overview of what goes into construction, so if you see our inspectors out on projects. Um, they're working on a lot of different things, if they're in their pickup trucks writing things down, that's probably what they're doing. Um, they're also out there surveying, uh, you know, and giving stakes to the contractor, so that they can, uh, build the, build the road for, for us, so.
Mark, are these items typically submitted before like a certificate of payment request would be handed in from a contractor to make sure that's checked off?
Correct, yes, and so, yeah, before us we make any payments, we need to get the certifications, we tell the contractor that at the pre-con. We need those certifications upfront to make payments. A lot of them are supposed to be given us, to us beforehand, sometimes they're not given us to after, they're taking a risk, if it doesn't meet the certification. Obviously we can't pay, pay for that.
Right.
Um, but we do say that we will not make payment until, um, until we have those certifications.
Pop. So, Mark, do we sample every load of hot mix that, we don't sample every load, do we?
No, no, we don't sample every load, uh, so at the plant, they pull so much. It's based upon, uh, startup production, I think with your first three hundred tons, they're doing a lot more testing. And then it becomes more, you know, I think the contractor's doing a few per day. Or the agency only does one verification, so the contractor does the, what they call a QC testing. Um, that's, we, quality control, but C, so we often think it stands for contractor, and then the QA. Quality assurance stands for the agency, so we're kind of verifying, we're watching them take the sample. We're watching them shake the sample, we're watching them perform the tests, um, a lot of times in the plant. Um, we have to, we don't have enough technicians to cover the field and the plant, we have to hire either a consultant to do the, the monitoring. And will observe the testing, or, um, uh, we have to, some a lot of time, in a lot of cases, MINDOT's able to perform that for us, and then they bill us for their time.
One, one thing, I had the opportunity when they were doing seventy-eight, I was going somewhere in there, the tech was sitting there and he was doing his paperwork. If you really want to understand it, just go sit in his truck while he's doing the paperwork, then you can really understand it. I mean, it's like, holy crap, you know?
Surprised of all the paperwork.
Yeah, you're surprised at how many tests and how much documentation the techs have to do when they're out there.
Yeah, and I know on that one, we did have pushback on, we had, you know, they went over their completion date, that's, that fall. And it was because of our documentation, we can back up why we assess liquidated damages.
Yeah.
And so that's key, I still, I don't, I think I was part of a project my first year as an engineer. And I'd worked for the company for four years, um, and when I left, that project was still, there was not an agreement between the county. And the contractor and my supervisor at the time said, well, Mark, you might get subpoenaed one day.
Great. All right, well, thank you for that information.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And then one, one quick last thing, uh, I, we were talking about MINDOT, and probably not something you wanted to hear, but. Uh, MINDOT is planning on replacing or doing bridge work on over Highway ten. Uh, fifteen, so if you're headed northbound on Highway ten, or, uh, there's a bridge on fifteen that crosses over Highway ten. They're planning on doing work on that in twenty twenty-six, which sounds like would require a detour on Arkansas. Twenty-nine and then back on ten, so.
So it just, the gift that keeps giving.
It is.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be an interesting interchange because of, uh, the, uh, eastbound traffic going west.
Mm-hmm.
So there's gonna have to be, yeah, that'll be interesting.
What are they doing on that?
I can't remember if they're replacing the bridge completely, or if they're just doing repair work.
Are they gonna move it from concrete to, I mean, that's a, when it, when it gets icy, that's a skating rink right there.
Sure, yeah, I'm not sure, they just, they said that they had age set money. I, I'm, I guess I'm not sure about, uh, for safety on bridges, but anyways, I think that's my understanding that they got money. To, to do work on that bridge, and they are at set for twenty twenty-six, they have no leeway of changing it.
All right, thank you, anything else, Mark? Any other questions for Mark?
How are we doing on tech engineers?
We, uh, have, uh, hired a second tech, um, and, uh, comes with actually a decent amount of experience, uh, background. Um, actually the testing side of things, he's starting on this coming Monday, so we're up to two. Uh, we had inquiry from somebody that had a, quite a bit of experience, um, but, uh. Our pay range is only so high, so.
Correct. All right, anything else for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
Lot of good information.
Yeah, absolutely. Members, if I could, gentlemen, if I could just, are you here for the ditch authority meeting?
Yeah, ditch authority.
So, members, if you'd consider, maybe we could recess our county board meeting and take that into consideration. Because we've got a long closed session coming up, and there's no sense making them sit here through that, if you're okay with that?
Yep, I think it'd be good.
Members okay with that? Okay, let's take a two-minute recess, and then we're gonna open up our ditch authority meeting, okay?
Thank you.
The mic?
All right, I'm gonna call to order our ditch authority meeting, if we could move into our first item, approve or amend the amendments from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Second. Motion a second to approve those meeting minutes of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion in regards to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Item three, accept the repair report, order and set a public hearing on repair report on County Ditch nine, Mark.
Yes, uh, so County Ditch nine, we received the repair report from Houston Engineering. Staff had time to review it, so it has been filed with the auditor. Um, next step is that the ditch authority needs to officially order and set a public hearing for the repair report. At that time, um, I think Joe Lewis would give a presentation on the repair report. Um, the part of, I think, state statute is it says the hearing must be, uh, there must be a public hearing within thirty days. So. And I would, I guess I would recommend, um, to give the time for the auditor treasurer to send out notices to the landowners, um, doing, but then to meet within thirty days of having at the first board meeting on the second of May.
Okay? Members, any questions for Mark? Again, today is not the public hearing, but it's a repair order to set the public hearing.
Yeah, and there is an order as part of that, because that's all state statute reads, that's some, it says an order. Um, so that's what's kind of included in your packet. Um, the, so I, I guess the requested action would be add an order and set a public, a day and time for the public hearing, um, report on County Ditch nine and authorize the board chair to sign the official notice and order.
Okay, any questions?
Already cut and dried.
Yeah. Entertaining motion, then.
So moved.
To set it for May second?
May second.
Time?
Time. Should we do ten twenty?
Okay.
Approximately ten twenty.
Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion a second to set our public hearing for the repair report on County Ditch nine for Tuesday, May second at ten twenty AM here in the boardroom. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, move on to accept repair report, order and set public hearing on the repair report on County Ditch fourteen.
So again, same thing, County Ditch fourteen, uh, we, well, we wanted to combine or do these, uh, likely if we can at the same day. Um, if you know County Ditch ten, it's, it's downstream from County Ditch, or sorry, County Ditch nine is downstream from County Ditch fourteen. Um, but we have received the repair report on that, um, and so I, I, the same, uh, requested action.
Okay? Mr. Chair, guess I see our auditor treasurers in the office, is that gonna be enough time?
Yeah, that'll be plenty of time.
All right, thanks.
We have to meet that thirty-day requirement anyway, so at that point, we are tied to thirty days.
All right, what are your wishes on CD fourteen?
So move approval, same time, uh, and date of May second, approximately ten twenty.
Okay. Second. And a second, any other discussion on setting that public hearing for May second? Ten twenty. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Anything else on those two CDs, Mark? Gentlemen, I would like to recognize since you're here, is there something briefly that you wanted to address with us in regards to those CD? County ditches, or we do have the public hearing coming up now, so.
No, I understand that, so my name is Gary Lasker, I'm an attorney here for Mark Ratka, and this is just a learning process. He just contacted me, so I did, I looked on the website, I understood today, um, on the agenda is what you're talking about.
Okay.
I just wanted to come, I think he has some questions that would probably most directly be addressed by the engineer on the technical matters that we will work with the county on that and figure those out, so.
Perfect.
We're not asking to put anything on the record other than we appreciate you setting this to save us the time.
Sure.
Um.
Absolutely. And Mark, may, and Mark, maybe I encourage you to leave, uh, your contact information with Mark.
Cards.
And maybe Joe Lewis and you can talk to the engineers, that'd be perfect.
Some technical questions.
Yep, before that public hearing, that'd be great, because that won't delay it again then.
That sounds good.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen? How about the gentleman behind, how about the?
I'll look forward to working with your engineer and getting those things fleshed out and then if we have any other issues, we'll show up here on May second and we'll put those on the record at that time.
All right, how about the gentleman behind you?
I'm with him.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else, Mark?
No, that's it.
Well, shortest ditch authority meeting we're ever gonna have.
Yep.
We are adjourned to ten twenty-eight, you're welcome, we'll move back into, right away, back into our regular, uh, county board meeting under our next item, commissioner meeting updates, anybody like to volunteer to start us off?
I can go.
Okay, Commissioner Kapinski, go ahead.
Mine's gonna be quick.
He got to it before you did.
I had the BEP meeting, that was, uh, very, very, uh, it was a great meeting. They got a lot of stuff rolling, going on, but a lot of it's confidential, so, um, other than that, uh, we had, um, a couple of meetings last week, one that, uh, we're trying to figure out. Obviously, I was on, out of work, out of work conference in Vegas. One of the meetings I could attend virtually and the other one I was not able to.
Oh, yeah.
And Chair Jalinski goes, this is ridiculous, it, we have no idea whether we're coming or going, so.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Excuse me, just one second, Mark, yeah, could I have you, yeah, thank you, to step out just a minute, thank you. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Heinem.
And, and I shared with Commissioner Kapinski, I couldn't make that meeting neither, because I was the alternate.
Yeah.
And, and it was like, really, come on, people.
Yeah, something needs to be straightened out about that.
But with the virtual side of things, I, I sent a long email to Commissioner Jalinski going, Mr. Chair, I, I said, I don't understand, I can be virtual over here, I, if anybody wants to come in my hotel room, they can.
I think their issue, they have to post three days ahead and all.
No, that was, it was a week ahead.
Oh, correct.
Yeah. So, anyway, I think there, he, he, he brought, he sent back a very long email to me too, he agrees a hundred percent and he said something needs to be done with these virtuous, because it's saving taxpayers' money by being able to do virtually. If you gotta leave your house open or come to a county building and save travel, it's saving all taxpayers' money and why wouldn't we want to do that?
Yep, exactly.
That's all I have.
All right, that was your meeting. Commissioner Heinem, you were a close second, so go ahead.
Yeah, great, well, yep, so. So I was at the Shack meeting, uh, on the exec board for five hours, very interesting meeting. Once again, we brought up, you know, human health and human services, how come they're not combined and why don't they work together and they actually do work together, but. So we had a lot of conversation about that and then I was just at Grandview Lodge for the leadership conference and, and Commissioner Pop, I do believe it was probably the best conference we've ever had since I've been there and I've been to three of them already, so. Just my opinion.
Yep. All right.
So that's all I had, thank you.
Commissioner Schlongen, you ready over there?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I was at my first in-person, first steps meeting and we discussed, um, how we were gonna do meetings in the future. So that was interesting about that, anyway. Then I went to the workforce housing summit at St. Cloud State University and they had a few people talking about, um, housing and childcare and how to get things. Yeah, they gave us some stats. And. Uh, then I went, was on the AMC Zoom meeting on the twenty-seventh, all the bills coming up. How they're progressing. That, I think that was all yet.
Okay.
And then the conference.
Yeah, Commissioner Pop?
So, back on the twenty-first, we had our library, we presented the, they presented, the finance committee presented, uh, um, twenty twenty-four budget. Um, it looks like we will have, we'll definitely have a decrease in Benton County.
Ooh.
Um, and it's kind of to be determined because as of this point in time, Wright County had an increase and they're gonna try to reduce that down to zero and if they reduce that down to zero, it'll be a larger increase for us, I can tell you how much it is, but it, because of the formula, how the formula works with, like, you know, with your tax capacity, population, usage, there's so many things in that.
Can you change that formula so that we can do better?
Uh, it's a joint power, so it would take a, it would take a huge, uh, a huge time to.
You had to open up that store, didn't you?
Well, yes.
One thing we discussed is that Wright County is now gonna surpass Sherburne County on board reps because they have, uh, population is really close, but they have a larger tax capacity and a larger usage, so Stearns is gonna have to drop off one member and Wright County's gonna pick up one member, it's based on how that is, we'll, we'll never get past one member, I wish we would. I, I think my true deal would be to have the six county commissioners plus at least one at-large member from every county. That would be my ideal, but it's not in the, it's, if we ever get to the point where we rewrite the bylaws and that, would be something we'll try and look at. Um, the other part is we have a huge, uh, we have a huge need right now for, uh, people coming in that want books pulled from the library and we have a policy that we want to stay with because we don't want to, just because one group says we don't want this book, another group says we want this book and they've been coming before us for open forum and these people are really hard to, you give them two minutes and they're really hard to cut off and so we had a board meeting that went on and then for, from probably six till nine and then you get board members input that, how they wanted to change and I see we have different views on that even. So it's been really a struggle with that part of it. Um, I am not gonna be sit on that board if we're gonna examine every new book or every book that's on there that somebody says ain't right. No way, it just, you, we can't do that, that's all we'll have, we'll have to meet every month if we're gonna, or every week if we're gonna do that for the number of books, so we got that done. Then on the twenty-third, I had the Rum River, we actually wrapped up everything, we got a, a project plan in place. Um, we will now only have meetings four times a year to discuss that. I think we got a, a good board, they, one thing that I liked is that they, the staff will review the plans and bring it towards the board for, uh, approval. The staff from Soil and Water or the, you know, from the six, seven entities cannot say we need to do this plan, they gotta present it to this board, I think we approved about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in projects for twenty twenty-three and we will have an, that's a carryover of about two hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty-four and we get a million dollars each year. But in that million dollars, there is amount of, uh, uh, staff time, which took a considerable amount of that money, which I'm not real happy about how much staff time we're getting, but I think as we work forward and we get some of the plans in place, it's gonna take less staff time and more money towards projects.
I was just gonna say, it's a learning curve for them.
It's a learning curve for them too, so, so I think, you know, after all those years and all those meetings, I think it's wrapping up and we're down to, this is the, the dimension that we're going in, this is how it's gonna operate in the future. Whether it's good or bad, I think that's still to be determined.
I do have to say that I'm a little envious of you because I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum now with the Mississippi, thank you.
Well, hopefully there's enough people that were, were on the Rum River that are on the St. Cloud one that they will take some of that knowledge and say that, you know, you need to do this, because we went back to step one so many times. So, but it's, I think the process is, is finally done and I will determine if it's gonna be a good process or, you know, the old way was better, but we don't have any choice with, you know, um, the Bowser Board.
Anything else?
Nope.
That'll be it. Mr. Kapinski?
Mr. Chair, I did forget one, I was down to the Highway twenty-three, uh, coalition for the day, uh, down at the Capitol. Very well attended by the legislators, so, uh.
And that was one of my notes, was a thank you for being the alternate attending that, I appreciate it.
I was, uh, I was looking, I'm like, oh, there's a day down there, but, uh, it was very well, I, I got your shirt, so.
Yeah, I heard you already spilled cheese whiz on.
Yeah, exactly, but, um, I think we had like forty legislators come by, cut, I mean, got to talk with Howe, got to talk with Schultz and put a, put a little, uh, note in there for our other projects too, so.
I hear you got a little Jimmy John's out of the deal.
It's very little Jimmy John's.
So I heard that's your shirt from now on then?
That is, yeah, they're, they're gonna get, they're gonna.
Get a new one for, yeah, Commissioner Johnson?
That's it.
Great, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I was also at the, I went up to the highway department for, to see the Highway ten and twenty-three interchange.
For the MINDOT and?
Yeah.
MINDOT meeting, okay, thank you. All right, um, I had the Mississippi One Water One Plan, uh, Policy Committee meeting, uh, last week. Um, we're just getting started, as I said, Commissioner Clark is gonna chair that policy committee and, uh, Chelly, and I'm losing her last name right now, member of SWCD, Sherburne, will be the vice. So, um, also obviously attended the leadership conference, I thought it was, uh, very well put together, did get a little bit long Thursday afternoon, in my opinion, but it was, it was a good conference. Um, and then, excuse me, Friday the thirty-first, I was able to attend and, and sit and listen at the Foley Area Chamber meeting, Representative Schultz was there and talked with residents and city officials and I just, I kind of wanted to be, I, we had a round table, it was nice, but I just kind of wanted to stay quiet and listen and so there's a lot of good conversation there, he shared a lot of what was going on down at the legislature, so. Uh, they're busy, obviously, in their session here, they're coming up on, uh, Easter break though, I think, now to
Yeah.
A week or so off, so, anyways, uh, that's all I had, anybody else, commission meeting updates?
Did Schultz, um, say anything about, uh, the county board pushing the Foley, uh, wastewater project?
As far as?
At that?
No.
Okay, because I told him to bring that up.
Well, he, he, no, I don't think he said anything about us pushing it.
Okay.
Don't recall that. But he, he, there was a long discussion about it, probably twenty minutes of the hour was on that.
Okay.
Anything else, commission meeting updates? All right, any comments by commissioners? Any comments at all? All right, committees of the whole, Monty?
Uh, just two things to mention, of course, you said June seventh at eleven thirty as your employee recognition event. One other change is you have a committee of the whole on April seventeenth to meet with GLT at eight thirty. Uh, you may have seen, I, I suggested adding to that agenda at approximately ten AM that morning, uh, an update from SWCD on the Little Rock Creek groundwater issue. Um, as you may have seen, it, it appears that that's moving to more formal steps to, as Jerry describes, declare a groundwater use conflict which could result in change in, in, um, permits. So, uh, I thought it'd be a good time to have Jerry give an update to the board, he says their, uh, um, board member, uh, Commissioner Rao has been on that very closely following that, so they can give you an update. Again, just add it to your agenda for April seventeenth and that's it.
Anything else? All right, is there a motion to set those?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Um, I'd just like to take a second, Mark, if I could, recognize you, thank you for your work the last few months, appreciate it, I know it's been a, it's been a rough road being short-staffed and I know you've done the very best job you could do, so thank you, I appreciate that, been a lot of work. So, thank you. Anything else, Monty?
Just a couple crucially notes, is, uh, Chris tells me he will speak with his employer today and, uh, hopefully by the end of today, I'll have a, a start date, uh, for us. Um, actually, on the matter of the compensation consultant, Johanna, actually, I, I'll be meeting with Tessa Monday to discuss their maintenance program. If you've kind of heard, remember about that?
Yep.
Well, then we'll, we'll, we'll kick off that discussion with her about, uh, doing a market analysis and recommendations to, on our public works director position as well, so that's Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, yes, just so you know, everyone's got, uh, some information that I got from the Sock Rapids for the city hall and everything about their rentals and everything, so take time to read all of that. I don't know if you've received it yet, Scott?
I haven't seen it.
But it should be.
Anybody else have it? Yeah, I got it. So this is for information?
Information, correct, yep.
Okay. All right, anything else, members, anything else?
Nope.
All right, we are adjourned, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we need to, uh.
You make a motion to go into closed session and if you could, if you could look to the, the action item on the resolution, I'm excuse you, on the agenda item page. We, of course, want to incorporate that statutory reference into the minutes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, conduct a closed session of the county board under Minnesota statute thirteen D dot, or dot oh-five. Oh, do you, okay, subdivision three, to, do I have to go through, to evaluate performance of individuals subject.
We'll get it all on the record, I'll second it.
And I just want to mention for the, for the record, we're also to mention, we should mention as well is that the individuals evaluated today will be the human services director, the land services director and the county administrator, those three positions will be evaluated today, that needs to be in the record.
I will add that to my motion.
Second.
All right, motion a second, go into closed session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, we'll move into closed session.
You'll have to wait your turn, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Tim.
See you shortly.
I'll be outside.
All right.